Good evening, everyone. It's 6:30, so I'll now call to order this February 25th meeting of Lancaster City Council. A few reminders for everyone with us here this evening for tonight. This meeting and its participants are being recorded. Please take a moment to silence your phones or other devices as a courtesy to others. During this meeting, there will be several opportunities for public comment. Anyone making public comment should do so at the microphone there at the podium, so you can be heard both in this room and on our live stream. Comments should be related to issues that have or may come before council as legislation and should be addressed toward council rather than to others in the room. Each speaker will be given three minutes. To keep time, you will see the light that's here in front of me turn green when a speaker begins, it will blink yellow when there is one minute remaining, and red when time has been exhausted. I thank everyone in advance for making sure that we all have equal time. And now for all of those who are willing and able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harris, would you please call the roll of members?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Med. Mr. Royo.
Here.
Mr. Gleese.
Here.
Ms. Gregg.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Hirsch.
Here.
And President Beckett.
Here. Councilor Med is excused this evening. We'll move to our approval of the minutes of the February 11th, 2025, meeting of council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any council comments on the minutes? Hearing none, Mr. Harris, please.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Mr. Gleese.
Aye.
Ms. Gregg.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Beckett.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is Proclamations, Honors, Awards, and Resolutions of Recognition confirming, Mr. Harris, we have none of those this evening, is that right?
We do not have any.
Thank you. That will take us to our first public comment period. This is reserved for residents who have contacted the city clerk ahead of time to make comment at this evening's meeting. Again, as a reminder, duration of comments is limited to three minutes per speaker. Please begin with your name and your block of address for our meeting record. Mr. Harris, do we have folks for the first public comment period?
Yes, we do, Madam President. First is Tamara Hackman.
Ms. Hackman, good evening. And since you're first at the microphone, if I could just get you to hit the button to make sure the light is green when you speak? That way we can hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for having me. Good evening, Lancaster City Council. I'm here today as a concerned citizen regarding recent letters that we all received notifying us of elevated levels of PFAS in our drinking water that source from the Conestoga River. It was the second letter that I received on that matter, and shortly after asking you to speak, it was actually, there was an issue they had on WGAO. As someone who cares about health, our health and well-being, I came to express my concern, and I'd like to hear a little bit more about the city's plans to address the issue. The discovery of these chemicals in our water, it's alarming, especially considering the well-established risk associated with PFAS. These chemicals are linked to various health problems, including cancer, and pose significant risks even through skin contact, and we can't boil the water that we're showering in. I understand that we're drinking water sourced from the Conestoga River, and it may not be sufficient with our growing needs, but the alarming fact is that this contamination, it affects everyone, every household, every business, every individual that is depending on our water supply. So we need immediate clarity on what actions we're taking to safeguard our community's health. So specifically, I'm interested in knowing what plans are in place to transition from relying on the Conestoga River to sourcing water from the Susquehanna, a larger, cleaner, safer alternative. I'm wondering if the council's already initiated or considered such a move, and what steps are being taken to ensure the transition would be feasible and swift? What purifications are we currently using to remove PFAS from our drinking water? What purification technologies are we exploring? What steps are being taken to ensure these methods are fully effective? And what long-term measures are being planned to prevent further contamination of our water supply beyond just treating the water and depending on rainfall? How is the city working to address the root cause of the issue and ensure it doesn't continue to affect future generations? Finally, I urge the council to prioritize transparency, urgency, and communication. The public must be informed regularly about what's being done, what progress we're making, and what safety measures are being implemented. We deserve clean, safe water, and the city must take every possible step to ensure that. PFAS contamination is not a minor issue. It affects our health.
Remind you that we hit three minutes.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. And also, if I could get your block of residence for the meeting record, since we missed that at the beginning of your...
Oh, my address?
Your block of residence.
848.
Thank you. And you had a lot of questions this evening, and I don't know that we have those immediately available to us. Because you registered for comment ahead of time, I do have access to your email address. Would it be okay if I emailed you a follow-up?
I would really appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, do we have further comments for the first period?
We do, Madam President. Next is Ahmed Zeki.
Mr. Zaki? Yes. Good evening. Good evening.
Hello, good evening to City Council and Madam Mayor. My name is Ahmad Zaki at 336 Beaver Street. Thank you for the opportunity that give us again that we talk about, about the problems. Last time we spoke and cried and asked you where and how we can get justice. Can't get justice. Court system is unable or don't want to give to us, that's the problem. I don't think that nobody can answer this. If somebody come, come and tell us that, go get a lawyer and pay a hundred thousand to get back, you are lost, hundred thousand lost back, I think that person should go relearn what is the meaning of justice. And the problem, yeah, this is the problem. When, when there is no justice in a country or society, many things happening. Some people getting aggressive and killing each other. You know about the Luigi, Mangan, everybody know the story. That is the same story, the same justice story. If there was a justice, that person will not kill that person, the CEO of insurers. And some people, some people getting disappointed, killing himself. Last month, in Huntingtown, Huntington, a person killed himself in front of the court. And unfortunately, nobody even mentioned his name to, and nobody cared about him. Against justice. And some people is getting silent and dying every day, getting depression, mental problems, losing their jobs, losing trust on government, become homeless, a lot of homelessness because of this, because of unjust systems, and exposing to many crimes. We felt all this four categories. I know what they felt, what the person is in the jail, and how person they killed, I feel it in tears. But we choose to raise our voice. Mr. Gere is, because of this business, he lost his house, he couldn't get back job, and almost homeless. I give him a rooms, you can ask him. I'm not getting corrected, but yeah, this is a life example of this problem. And what we have to do, we have to find the root of the problem by, by giving penalty to the Mr. Luigi, not solving the problem. In future, we will come another person and kill another CEO because they cannot get to court. They cannot ask their, their right. And another person will kill himself in front of the court too, because when you cannot get to court, because you have no options. The only option is you do by yourself what you can do. It's easy option. But if you, the government, to give him options, let him to hear your voice and give him opportunity, we'll solve all problems.
Mr. Zaki, I apologize, my light was not working.
Okay.
It's gone over three minutes. I appreciate your comments this evening, and I know we've been in touch, so...
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris, are there further comments for this period?
Yes, next is Gary Ellis.
That's me. I was gonna give him my three minutes, if he wanted to keep talking, but it just, I will say one thing, it breaks my heart that this man came to this country for a better way of life and justice, and this is the point that he's at now. And I was born and raised here, and I agree with everything he's saying, there is no real justice. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Rolston.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, are there further comments for the first period?
No, there are not.
Apologize. We will move then to our next section of the meeting, which is reports requested by council. This evening, we have a report from our Healthy Lives, Healthy Lancaster team. Mr. Wall, good evening. Please be aware of this, as we get our AV set up.
All right, I think I'm all set up here. Thank you. Good evening, councilors, and good evening, mayor. I'm really excited for the opportunity this evening to share some updates with you regarding Healthy Lives, Healthy Lancaster, which is the city's initiative to study the health and well-being of Lancaster city residents. We're in our final stages and actively finalizing the study documents right now for release to the public and our community partners, and thought this would be really good timing to share with you an overview of the process, a brief overview of our engagement outcomes, some quick examples of the data that's been compiled and how that will be conveyed, and then lastly, a summary of the community health priority areas and our next steps. And just to fully introduce myself to everybody, my name is Craig Walton, I'm the Bureau Chief of Health for the City of Lancaster. So just to start with a quick overview, Healthy Lives, Healthy Lancaster was an initiative led by the Bureau of Health, which is in the Department of Community Planning and Economic Development. Some of you may actually remember, this was funded by the Community Development Block Grant CARES Act funding, and it's the first health and well-being assessment of its kind being conducted focused solely on Lancaster city. We also thought the timing of conducting this study was really critical, doing that post-COVID to better understand the community health needs and how they may have been exacerbated by the pandemic. And then through the process, we knew we would need some support to carry out this project, so we engaged a consultant through an RFP process, and that consultant was Build Community, which is actually a local consultant with national experience in this area. So prior to starting the assessment, we wanted to set out some really clear objectives for this study and what we wanted to achieve. Several of those are listed here, but the main ones I wanted to point out to everybody is that we wanted to put together a comprehensive Lancaster city community health profile, really looking at needs, just not citywide, but really at a more granular level, down to the census tract level. Also, it was of utmost importance for us to engage Lancaster city residents throughout the entire process, and as I share some of those engagement outcomes, I think you'll see that we were successful in that area. And ultimately, we wanted to be able to, you know, enable the city to improve our ability to collaborate with community partners to address these health priority areas. So something else that was really fundamental to this project was incorporating the social drivers of health framework. These are also commonly referred to as the social determinants of health. But essentially, we understand that the conditions in which we live, work, learn, and play have profound impact on our overall health and well-being. So without diving in too deep, the two images illustrated on the slide here show some of those other community-level factors that influence our health. I think most interestingly, it's the idea that the vast majority of factors occur outside of the doctor's office or outside of a clinical setting, and I believe as you'll come to see in the findings, they're also, these are also the things that residents highlighted the most as key issues affecting their health and well-being. So obviously, a major part of this study was collecting data and input from residents. In kind of the research realm, we refer to data we collect directly as primary data and data we collect from other sources as secondary data. This data collection process included, first, an analysis of health and socioeconomic data, and then we followed that up with conversations with community residents. We did a community-wide survey that was open for several months, available both online and in paper format, and then we also had a lot of in-depth conversations to gather input from experts and community partners. So while this might sound a little backwards, we actually started this process with compiling the secondary data. So this was gathering all the data that was existing from other sources, including federal databases, state databases, as well as local data that has been gathered through previously completed assessments. So I also want to note that with pulling so much data from the federal databases and considering the timing of this study, we had actually pulled the most updated data that was available towards the fall of last year. There is actually going to be data in this assessment that is no longer publicly available, at least at this time, due to all the current, you know, federal events that have occurred recently. So that was not expected, but I wanted to highlight that because I think that shows the, you know, critical importance of us completing this study at the time that we did. I want to mention that the purpose of this presentation this evening is in no way to give a full overview of all the data that we've gathered. We have over 100 pages of data that was collected either from those other sources or from residents' feedback. But I did want to share a couple examples with you all to give you an idea of how this data will be conveyed in the study report. This slide shows social vulnerability mapping and compares that to a life expectancy map. It illustrates a connection between low social vulnerability and higher life expectancy, as well as a higher social vulnerability leading to lower life expectancies. This information allows us to strategize around what is happening in those high vulnerability communities to develop strategies to improve health equity throughout the community. But also, interestingly, there are some outliers as well. There's at least one of the lower socially vulnerable neighborhoods that has also a lower life expectancy. And I think this kind of information alerts us to kind of ask the question, like, what's happening here? So this next slide is an example of childhood-led poisoning rates. Us highlighting childhood-led poisoning risk is nothing new. This is something we've known for a while, but when we can really see the city's rates compared to the county and compared to that of Pennsylvania, this really underscores the importance for the work that we're doing in this area. And while we've known this, it might not be widely known, and making this information fully available really helps us continue to engage more partners and more collaboration around this really important work. So after we completed the secondary compilation, all the data that we could gather from the existing resources, then we shifted to where, where do we need to know more from our residents? So we set out to collect out more information through the community survey, through focus groups and listening sessions, through stakeholder interviews, as well as broad outreach events that were carried over the course of last year. As a result of all of those, all of those outreach efforts, we had engaged over 50 organizations, collected over 1,100 resident surveys. During the outreach event, we had 1,000-plus resident interactions, and then through the focus groups and listening sessions, we had over 100 participants. In addition to all of that, we engaged over 200 stakeholders or experts, and then had 20 in-depth interviews with key informants. This next slide is meant to be a little overwhelming, just to illustrate all of the broad collaboration that happened throughout the study. So we have, again, over 50 organizations that helped us carry out this work to be able to spread information about the community survey, to educate their workforce so that they could help spread the word. In addition to that, about 20 of these organizations that are marked by the asterisk, they served on an advisory committee that really helped with the initial planning of the study, as well as carrying out the implementation. And this slide really shows something that I'm proud of in terms of our engagement outcomes. We were able to monitor participation in the survey throughout the process, and it wasn't just about hitting numbers. We really wanted the participation to, you know, demonstrate and represent our city. If you look on the left side of the slide, you can see the percentages of participation by quadrant, and so I feel we have really solid participation from each quadrant throughout the city. In addition to that, we had identified several specific populations and target groups that are often really underrepresented in these types of assessments, and that's what you'll see on the right, that includes a variety of the special populations that we wanted to make sure were included. And again, we were able to monitor the participation in the survey while it was open, and when we were seeing a lack of participation from particular groups or from particular areas in the city, that is where we focused our outreach efforts, to make sure we heard from them. So this slide's an example of some data that resulted from one of the survey questions about increased need for services following the COVID-19 pandemic. And you can see that a lot of the responses towards the top really relate to financial stressors, economic stressors, things related to housing, and so that's really been enlightening. And in addition to that, some things that the city's already been focusing on related to childcare, transportation. It's just really interesting to see how these things, not just that they're needs, but as the question's asked, these are areas where folks have needed more help following the pandemic. And then here's a few examples of resident feedback that we got through open-ended survey questions and listening session feedback. So just to share a few of these with you, in areas related to food security and healthy food access, we heard from residents saying, more small markets that are in walking distance, or trucks with fresh produce in our neighborhoods so we can go out and buy fresh fruit and vegetables. Related to behavioral health, folks saying, you can get help in a crisis, but there's a long wait for ongoing care. And then with access to services, families have more than one need at a time, navigation should be more than a transactional thing. And then the next one, from a new resident and refugee, I didn't know where to go, I only found out about some services through word of mouth. These things highlight what we can do better, not just as a city, but what we can do better as a community. And then this last example, highlighting some of the data, is probably the closest thing to how we are going to be drawing in data as well as resident feedback in the study report. So the maps show food insecurity by neighborhood, with the darker areas experiencing higher food insecurity. And then below that, we had focus groups where we had conversations with residents to get input from them about, what does this mean for them? What are your thoughts about what we can do to improve this? And there was a lot of focus on community gardening, which was really affirming, because this is something the city's kind of just started to really lean into a little bit more with the Bay Street Garden Project. But again, we got feedback from residents about the value of community garden programs, and even comparing, you know, saying that there's community gardening opportunities available at the park, but why can't there be more opportunities available locally in the city? So we heard that loud and clear. So again, that in no way was to give even a comprehensive overview of the type of data that we will have, it was really just to give a snapshot to kind of illustrate the ways in which we're going to be communicating this data in the report. So again, with all the data and resident feedback we've received, over the last several months, we've been processing, analyzing, and trying to boil this down to actionable areas for us to focus on for the next several years. The advisory committee has helped us with that, and the city's Board of Health has really helped us with that process. And this slide illustrates the five main community health priority areas that will be articulated in the final report. So tier one is, relates both to the most actionable areas for the city to address, as well as the areas that we heard highlighted the most by city residents. And so that would be focusing on promoting safe, healthy, sustainable communities, with a focus on food systems, with a focus on water, housing, recreational spaces, and streets. These are really the things that comprise the built-in natural environment, one of the key social drivers of health. Tier two are also key priority areas, but these are areas that will rely heavily on community partnerships and leveraging all of those relationships for collective impact. That includes access to services, homelessness in community health, public health emergency preparedness, and climate response of public health. preparedness, and climate responsive public health. I want to add that the report, under each of these community health priority areas, will have specific strategies and action steps for each priority area. We've already got quite a bit of that fleshed out, but we do have to have some more conversation across departments at the city, as well as our community partners, so that we can make sure what we're actually including in this report is actionable and realistic. So before I wrap us up with next steps, I'd like to invite Dr. Jessica Amy to the podium to share some remarks. She's a Board of Health member since 2023 and also was a very active advisory committee member throughout the study. Take it away. Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. Thanks, Council. So I just want to share, as a member of the Advisory Board for Healthy Lives, Healthy Lancaster, and a background in both nursing and public health, that this survey felt unique and special in its approach in contrast to health needs assessments performed by large health organizations. This was the first health needs assessment of its kind to focus specifically on the needs of Lancaster City. And we really focused on community and neighborhood level outreach. I know for myself, I got to participate in multiple plant and seed distribution days where we met with with individuals from the community and did surveys with them there. But not only did they fill out the survey, but we got to have conversations and hear about their routines and hear about their everyday struggles. And as a registered nurse, having experience in both an ICU and outpatient at a federally qualified health center, I have seen extensively the effects that chronic disease can have on the body. But as Craig pointed out, we know our health encompasses so much more than just that. So as a board member, the Lancaster Board of Health, we have been exploring how we can utilize the final data that we've obtained to move forward within a sustainable and effective way. We will look at who is in the position to take those actions, which is also a unique approach from some of the larger system approaches. So we can look on a city level, who is already doing some of these initiatives, and we can explore within the community partners, that slide that was super busy with all the list of community partners of existing programs, and look for additional opportunities for collaboration. So this collective effort will help identify priorities for our city's most vulnerable populations and promote health equity for all of its residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Amy. So to wrap us up, as I mentioned, we're in the home stretch of finalizing the summary report and putting together all the data compilations. We're anticipating release of all of these materials in March or April. Also, one of the deliverables that we have related to this project is to launch an online dashboard that helps us communicate all of this information to the public, as well as be able to monitor the impact of health initiatives moving forward. So that'll be in the coming months. We're also going to reconvene our advisory committee to continue strategizing around the identified community health priorities and then take action. To help us with that, we'll be mobilizing the $200,000 that was also set aside by Council for implementation funding to address the priority areas. Again, that was from the Community Development Block Grant CARES Act funds. And then lastly, we're going to continue to strengthen our collaboration with our local health systems as it relates to community health needs assessments and community health improvement plans. This wasn't originally planned, but as it worked out, we ended up being on basically the same cycle as all of our other local health systems. And we've recently been meeting to identify all the synergies between our needs assessments and what we'll be doing to promote community health moving forward. And we're already talking about ways, since these types of things are done periodically, most often every three years, we're already talking about ways to work together more for the next needs assessment that would take place in the future. So with all that said, I'm glad to take any questions or comments that Council may have.
Craig, thank you so much for your presentation this evening. I have a reading question I'll open up to Council. So we've seen comprehensive style plans come before us before, and it doesn't sound like we need to take any legislative actions to adopt your finalized plan. But can you speak a little bit about any ways that Council might interact with the strategies and tactics that are going to be listed in the final plan? What ways, what might we be called to take action on them?
Great question. Thank you. The Board of Health actually was discussing that at our last meeting. And one thought that comes to mind is there might be some coalition building around some of these issues, or, you know, or at the least developing some work groups. And I think those would be spaces that Council members, as well as other community members, would have great opportunities to get involved with the work moving forward.
Thank you. I'll open it up to questions from members of Council. Mayor Sarachi?
Thank you very much, Craig. I really appreciate this. My question is in relation to Slide 8, which is about the childhood lead poisoning. Can you just comment about the data sharing partnership that we have with the state and how that data helps inform the slide? And that otherwise, without that special agreement that I think took us years to get through, we would actually not have this data because we don't have a county-level Department of Health. And so can you just talk about, I think that's this data, but I just want you to help me clarify.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. While this data does get released by the Pennsylvania Department of Health, it is released two years after it actually occurs in a surveillance report. So it takes them two years to kind of analyze this, and so it becomes really not that actionable. So bringing it back to the data sharing agreement we were able to establish, we actually get a weekly list, or a list sent to us weekly from contacts at the Department of Health of all confirmed lead poisoning test results for children within the city of Lancaster. And so that helps us in a variety of ways. One of the main things we do with that is obviously reaching out to offer our services through our Lead Hazard Control Program, and then also with our partnership with LGH Penn Medicine's Lead-Free Families Program. If, you know, due to our different eligibility criteria, if we're not able to serve them through our program, we have a great partnership with them to help them get services to ensure they're living in a lead-safe home. We also have a lead-safe, or sorry, a lead-related data sharing agreement with LGH as a local health system that also helps us take other public health actions and interventions in the case of a lead-poisoned child.
And I would just underscore that I think the other benefit to this and having this information and being able to do it over time is that we are now over our 500th house that we have remediated for lead, and that we will now be able to show a trend line, hopefully, of children's exposure going down. And that when we only had the surveillance data that was so old and not actionable, we had the children in maybe an apartment, for example, who were repeatedly being exposed by the same unit of housing. And we are trying to interrupt that pattern. So I think it's just to say that this level of data and how we're using it is very critical to our efforts.
Thank you. Any additional questions from Council? This is not a legislative action before Council this evening, but I will open it up for a few minutes for any comments from the public, if you would be so kind, Craig, to entertain those.
Of course.
If there's any public comments on the presentation, please do so at the podium. Begin with your name and block of residence. And I believe my timer will, is working again. It is.
Alessandra McIlroy, I'm on the 100th block of South Anne Street. I found it very interesting that water was on the number one top of your list in terms of what is necessary for a healthy community. And then we had, I think it was you who was speaking about the continuous problems that we have with our water. I think it is not sufficient to just address it with one person. I think city council should address the entire city and discuss what steps they will take in order to remedy this situation. Because numbers are wonderful, but without action, numbers mean nothing. Then number two, mental health, I think is a very important issue because, especially because many health insurances do not pay for mental health services, and if you have on Medicaid, et cetera, it's almost impossible to find a provider. When we have situations where the government is not listening to we, the people, we have situations like Aaron Bushnell burning himself to death a year ago today. We have situations like Luigi Mangione shooting someone because the government is not listening. When I see gentlemen like these two, who tried everything to have their concerns heard and addressed, and nothing is happening, then I think that is what is causing our mental health to go down. Because if, especially which your report shows so well, you know, financial issues are the number one stressor for people. And if you lose your house and your livelihood because of government or lack of government, that is not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.
What I can share in response to that, and I'll start with the second, the second topic related to to mental health. This will be an area that gets highlighted in the study. And then based on resident feedback, as well as what we know for kind of evidence-based strategies, there's strong support for expanding the work related to trauma-informed communities, which the city's been engaged in, but there's a lot more that our community can do. Also, it affirms support for and to find ways to strengthen and expand some of the work related to having social workers involved in our various departments. We have two police social workers that have been working for the city for the last several years. And we also have a health and housing social services case manager that works hand-in-hand with people to help avoid things like evictions and help improve housing stability. And while there's only so much that one person can do, these have been really great pilot projects that have been impactful. And this type of work to understand the needs, as well as the impact of our efforts, will only strengthen and help us expand that work. Related to water, I can say I'm much more familiar with water issues that may be related to lead. And I'd say the reason I'm more familiar with that is just because there's been so much more research related to that. There's a lot more data and science available. Some of these other issues are are a little bit more modern, and I think at a national level or even a global level, the science is quickly evolving with trying to understand the sources and the best solutions to those types of issues. And while I can't say that the city has all of the answers, I do know we, you know, feel that everyone deserves access to safe, healthy drinking water. And so we'll be continuing our work to ensure that for our community.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I should have mentioned before, if I get answers on those questions, I'd be happy to share them in a future Council meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Any additional comments from the public on the presentation?
Can I speak about some situation that is related to my situation?
If it's related to the presentation, you're more than welcome to. I just need you to do it at the podium. Please begin with your name and block of residence again for our record.
Hello, my name is Ahmad Zakid, 336 Beaver Street. Again, the same thing is that you presented, again, the issue for the community or for the country, all issue. I think there has to be an office, an office in the Lancaster County as a government office, not a enjoy or as foundation, free foundation, nonprofit foundation. Have to be office from the government. A person is come to that office and say their problem. Okay, I have this problem. I have that problem. Doesn't matter, any problem. And that office government have to have some mentors or advisors, then send them there, send them there, that person feel, oh, the government is answering me. There's someone to see me. There is a specific office in Lancaster, not this foundation, that foundation. This foundation is a caseworker. Well, I cannot do this. No, the city, the government have to be responsible for this. Then that that office send them to different offices to do their job, like mental health problem or homeless, especially homeless. Last month, we had a homeless problem. Homelessness are things that have to solve. It must not be paid for by the begging money. It's a responsibility from the government to take care of them. That is the people of this country. Doesn't matter by any reason, they come to the street, you have to find a solution for them, not send them to here, to there. You have to be there as a budget from the government for these people. Because homelessness is bringing down the dignity of country, of progress of country, rich country, their people is living in the street. It's very shame. If your Elon Musk's son live in the street, everybody will say, oh, you are a rich person. Why your children's son is sleeping in the street? And other country will say to you, oh, you are a superpower country, you are, why your people is sleeping in the street? Why? Why you are not taking care of them? Why your people is mental problem because of the financial or from any problem? But yeah, but if you want to solve this problem, you have to have office in the court or in the Lancaster city that everybody come and share their problem. Then that office sending to you, sending to that office, and to that office, then we solve the problem. But when there is no, or nothing is, the person will do by himself. What happened? A lot of bad things happening. And when homelessness, a thousand crimes happening from the homeless, drugs, many things. But first, why the people going to street? We have to prevent it. That not good to see. There's very easy solutions. But if somebody thinks, no, not, no need that too much money to take care of homelessness. If you take from homelessness, other issues, the people can't pay for their rent.
I apologize, we passed three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on the presentation?
I have a quick.
Sure. Please just begin with your name and block of residence for a meeting.
Gary Olson, also 336 Beaver Street. Given the current, what's the nicest way I can say this, regime that's in effect running our country, what happens when they turn around and say, nope, taking that money? Got to shut these down? Do we have a safe plan set up when they come and shut everything down?
Ms. Olson, do you have any additional questions with your time? Craig, can you address the federal funding, if any, for these particular projects?
Yeah, what I would say for this initiative, it's being funded by monies that were allocated several years ago. These haven't been the ones that have been in question or being subject to the freezes. But moving forward, you know, the availability of federal funding has a great impact on what we're able to do in local communities. But I fully believe, and what I've found even more so after becoming a Lancaster City resident, is that we are an extremely resourceful community, and the ways that we come together to help our community really stands out. And so while there's a lot of uncertainty around, you know, federal funding into the future, I do believe that wherever that goes, the Lancaster community will come together to do our best for our community.
Thank you. Any additional comments before we close this presentation? Here you are. Craig, thank you so much for your presentation this evening, and I look forward to seeing the final report.
Thank you all.
I'll give you a moment to get disconnected. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is interim reports of committees of council. I don't believe we have any of those this evening. Is that right, Mr. Harris?
That's correct. Men of residence.
Thank you. That takes us into our legislative agenda for this evening. We do have one item under resolutions this evening. It's resolution number 17, 2025. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Lancaster authorizing an application to the Pennsylvania Municipal Assistance Program. Motion to approve. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Councillors, thank you so much for this late addition to our agenda. This resolution, as you all know, we're going to soon undertake projects, update zoning and other ordinances. And the PA, DCD has funds available to assist municipalities for these purposes. So there is a looming grant deadline for us to submit until there may not be more funds available until sometime in the fall. So this is brought forward so that we could request that funding in a timely manner. Did I cover it or is there more?
You covered everything perfectly. Thank you.
And just to confirm, as the resolutions state, this resolution would also commit $75,000 in matching funds if we're successful in receiving the grant. Is that correct?
Correct. The funds would be both in-kind funds as well as matching funds, and it would be typically over a two-year period to go through the whole grant process.
Thank you.
Could you identify yourself as a representative?
Sure. My name is Betsy Logan. I'm the bureau chief of planning for the city.
Betsy, thank you so much for being here this evening. Any additional council comments on the resolution? From the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Mr. Police.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
For President's meeting.
Aye.
That concludes our legislative agenda this evening. We will now move into our second public comment period. This is open for comment on issues not previously heard on the agenda. Duration of comments again is limited to three minutes per speaker. If there's anyone that wishes to give a public comment at this time, please approach the podium.
Starting for 200th block of South Anne Street, I'm here to address a trash issue that we had on the 200th block on the even side. I think I came to council before because we had three weeks where the trash was not picked up on our block and a lot of trash was blown around. Most recently, we had more than six neighbors on the even side of the 200th block of South Anne Street get tickets for trash out in front of their yard. Now, we know this was on February the 11th. It started snowing that day that the ticket was issued. We know that it was windy. The fact that the trash only shows up on one side, basically it's because of the elevation when the wind blows. Most of those houses, and I'm asking council if they could provide us a report of how many houses actually on that side, I know of at least six that got a citation, that it wasn't something, that it was just negligence. And I mean, and I spoke to council about a lot of trash in our streets because our trash wasn't picked up for three weeks. So I am asking if council could get a report. I'm also looking for a report on public safety, especially on East End Avenue and Franklin Street. We know a good while ago, a stop sign was placed there, and we have been asking for a stop sign on Ann and Green for a long time, and we're told it's based on the number of accidents. I would like to see that report stating how many accidents were on East End Avenue and Franklin Street, that they were able to put a stop sign there. We keep seeing every report that keeps coming out about public safety and safety in the neighborhood. Yet our neighborhood comes here constantly talking about public safety and things that could help us, and we get nowhere. And we're once again coming to council. We know public safety is a big issue. If we're talking about mental health, public safety is a big issue. If we're not talking about having clean water to drink, it's a safety issue, whether it's for our children or for our community. I appreciate the report that Mr. Craig gave us, but there's nothing on there that we didn't know. We all know that those issues were problems. I'm hoping that there's going to be something more generated that's going to spell out the actions. There's nothing there to surprise council, whether it was lead pain, housing, mental health. We know all these things are happening within our city. So I'm hoping that that report will generate some actions that council can either look to or approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. Are there any additional public comments for this period? Hearing none. We'll close public comment for this evening. We'll move to our next item on the agenda, which is the report of the mayor. Mayor Serratt.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, I have a brief update on the lead line inventory project in Lancaster. I had forgotten that Craig was giving his report tonight, so I appreciate the synergy that is happening. In Lancaster, we know that lead paint is the culprit for most children with elevated blood levels. However, new EPA regulations require us to fast-track the elimination of lead lines in our water system. While everyone should be aware of they have lead heights, there is no concern about lead at large in our water system. The Water Bureau is monitoring for lead and treats our water with an anticoagulant to prevent lead leaching. We submitted our initial inventory in October, and the work is far from over. A final inventory is required by 2027. Any line whose status is unknown at that time will then be considered to be made of lead. Starting in 2027, we will have 10 years to remove all lead in galvanized water lines. That also means that we will have to verify the unknowns in that 10-year period as well. We're anticipating that this will cost another $16 million to finish just the inventory. That's not replacing a single line. We're working to reduce this number, which requires the cooperation of the public in submitting their line information. But please also recognize that our State Department of Environmental Protection requires us to have two forms of verification for the lines. And that presents a huge challenge for us, which is why in some neighborhoods across our water distribution area, which as you know extends beyond the city boundaries, we are doing something called pot-holing, which is literally digging a hole in the front of people's houses to determine the condition or the makeup of the line. This is very slow going, very labor-intensive and very expensive. At present, we have 34,000 unknown lines on the customer side. And this is just to remind you that historically, we've only ever needed to be responsible for the water lines coming off the water main to the curb stop, not the part from the curb stop into the house. That is new. That is part of the new federal regulation. That's why we need people to go to their basements and figure out what their line, their water line is made of. We have reported 469 known city-owned lead lines in our system and have 150 to 200 customer-reported lines that we need to, again, verify. This number is fluctuating as customers continue to report lines and they are verified. For a sense of scale, we serve water to about 50,000 accounts. And so, you know, we're talking about 1%. While this is a small fraction of the pipes in our system, the estimated cost of replacing our known lead lines is 19 million. So 19 million to replace $16 million to finish inventory. We are getting help from the EPA to campus customers in March. The EPA's Get the Lead Out, AKA Glow Team, will be here in Lancaster, March 12 through 15, to help campus city neighborhoods in our water distribution area. There is some question about whether or not that is actually going to happen, given all of the freezes, but we are continuing to plan for them being here in the city. As a reminder, as I mentioned, the city provides water to residents and surrounding municipalities in total to about 120,000 people each year. Last year, we had volunteers from AmeriCorps out to campus as well to help us with that identification and to hopefully reduce the cost of that verification process. We've had nearly 16,000 customers who have verified their water line material, and we very much appreciate their participation. Customers can submit their material, their water line through a simple form at cityoflancasterpa.gov/lead-service-line. And I should also just note that these regulations are subject to change under the Trump administration, and we are, of course, paying close attention to this. However, the PA Public Utility Commission and the PA Department of Environmental Protection also regulate our water system, and they can require earlier or different compliance dates, even if those federal regulations change. And while we're talking about water and just some of the questions that were raised related to PFAS, I will just very briefly comment on that. About 20% of human exposure is estimated to come from drinking water. 80% is from our clothing, our food packaging, the products that we use in our house, the Teflon pants that we cook on, et cetera. There is a dispute between the federal level of acceptable PFAS and the state level. And I would note that the Susquehanna River is not any cleaner than the Conestoga. It just has more water in it. And so it is an effect of dilution that has impacted the Conestoga River because of a drought that we are still in that caused the water levels to lower. And as a result, the concentration of PFAS increased. The City of Lancaster is not responsible for identifying where that PFAS is coming from, although we very much want to know because it is coming from upstream, and we do not have the legal authority to do anything about that. And so I encourage you to be in touch with the state representatives who have woefully underfunded DEP, and they are understaffed and under-resourced to do the kinds of investigation that we, as residents, need to determine the source of that PFAS coming into our water system. I will also point you back to the State of the City, my State of the City address, where I discuss the financial implications of all of these unfunded mandates that could dramatically increase the water bills and make them widely unaffordable for about half of our city residents. And I have great concern about that. And I would just finally note that PFAS is very, not only expensive and difficult treat at this moment, but it is also not regulated in bottled drinking water. So I always say this because I do not want anyone to go and spend tremendously more money on bottled drinking water. That is regulated at a lower level than your municipal drinking water. It is regulated actually through a completely different agency, through the FDA, and not the EPA. So that is your little, a brief update about that. But I also know that you will be hearing a lot more about the steps the city is taking as we discuss our capital plan in the months ahead, because to contemplate cleaning up a mess that we did not create is very, very expensive and has a lot of ongoing maintenance costs that are involved with that. And last but not least, I want to give a shout out to our firefighters, David Benson, Brady Benson, father and son, and Eric Shields for providing lifesaving care to a woman in cardiac arrest. As a matter of course, this is what our public safety teams do every day in Lancaster, but this wasn't in Lancaster, and they weren't on duty. They were in Philadelphia for the Super Bowl parade on February 14th, having breakfast in a diner, when a woman collapsed, and they administered lifesaving CPR. So I want to express my appreciation for representing the Red Rose City in this way, and more importantly, providing care for this woman until the Philadelphia Fire Department arrived on scene. The chief was able to follow up, and we had confirmation that she survived. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Serratt. I appreciate your updates. The next item on our agenda is report of president of council, and I do have an update to share this evening. I wanted to speak about and outline the process that council will use to select members of our Ethics Commission. As you might recall, Section 12 of our newly adopted City of Lancaster Home Charter calls for the creation of an independent Ethics Commission to be made up of seven city residents appointed as follows: two members appointed by the mayor, three members appointed by city council, and two members appointed by the city controller. Candidates for appointments to the Ethics Commission are placed on a public list of nominees to serve on the commission, and candidates may nominate themselves or be nominated by others. Initial term lengths will be staggered to ensure an ongoing process of new commission members. So we have an important job in front of us to appoint our first members. The nomination form itself has been active since January, and it will be open for submissions for our purposes through March 17th. So March 17th is the deadline, St. Patrick's Day. After that date, members of council will be able to review the nominees, and I will ask council members to respond with their top two choices to interview. And in front of those responses, the top four nominees across all council members will be asked to come in for interviews during an upcoming council meeting. Additionally, if considered for appointments to the Ethics Commission, the nominees will be asked to affirm the following statements. These are the criteria for selection. The nominee's primary residence is in the City of Lancaster. The nominee has not held any appointed or elected office in the City of Lancaster government within the last year. The nominee has not held any political party office within the last year. The nominee has not held any political action committee position within the last year. I look forward to this process, and will update council and the public on any additional deadlines as they come up. That concludes my report this evening. The next item on the agenda is council comments. Are there any council comments this evening?
Council President, if I may.
Council Per.
As you all know, February is Black History Month, and I just wanted to briefly shout out an event. There's a free presentation that is open to the public happening this coming Thursday, February 27th, at Tech Central, 102 Chester Street. There is free parking and the lot available, and the presentation will be happening at 12 noon. And then again at 6 p.m. Again, it's free and open to the public, but the presentation is titled "The 1960s, the Civil Rights Era in Lancaster, Pennsylvania." That concludes my comment.
Thank you very much, Council Per. Any additional council comments? Council Diaz.
I just wanted to see if we have received any type of numbers possibly of individuals that have been taken. But I have one person that did notify me of the spouse being removed and sent to Philadelphia. So I'm just curious if there's any report I try to talk with. Well, I was in a meeting with Churchill Service, and they're saying that they didn't have anything that has happened. So I was just curious if anybody heard anything.
Thank you, Council Diaz. I don't have any information about that, and I'm not privy to that information.
Thank you.
Any additional council comments? Hearing none. Having reached the end of our agenda, your motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Your turn. Thank you, everyone.